Okay, if I could have your attention, please. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session for Monday, March 17th, 2025. Again, we welcome all members of the public in attendance who are in attendance or streaming. We thank you for being with us this morning. As you know, our work sessions are public meetings. The public, of course, is always welcome. These meetings, we don't accept comments from the public. This is a time for council and staff to get together to talk about pending matters, issues, potential agenda items for the future, normally coming up before us in the next couple of weeks. So it's a time for us to really get down into the nitty-gritty about these issues. And I would comment, too, that oftentimes, I know some people think that at the regular city council meetings, when we act on a matter, that we have quickly acted upon it as if we don't have information, but that's not the case. Where we're really getting our information is during these week sessions, work sessions, where we can really dig into the meat of topics. So that's what we're doing here this morning. Again, I welcome everybody. And the first matter on our agenda this morning is the Historic Preservation Commission applicant interview. And we have Bethany Mayer with us this morning. Ms. Mayer, thank you for being in attendance. We appreciate your interest in the commission. And would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
My name is Bethany Ahur, as you heard, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to get onto the Historic Preservation Commission. I used to be staff for NHPC when I lived in Leadville, and there, most of their seat is a National Historic Landmark District. And I also was a Main Street manager at one time, so historic preservation and saving places really is something that I'm passionate about, so I'm hoping to kind of be a part of that in our HPC here. I hear they need some excitement on the board, anyway.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Ms. Mayer?
You're probably your face.
And I'll just add, I was purchasing some downtown buildings, too. Just seems to be like same timing, but we're purchasing some buildings downtown and hope to do a historic preservation project as well.
Well, thanks again for your interest. We really do appreciate it, and thanks for being here this morning.
Thanks.
If there are no other council questions or comments, we'll go on to...
May I ask you one question? What's our, what's our situation with the commission? Are there vacancies?
That's what I respond to. There was a vacancy that I responded to to apply.
Will's coming to rescue us.
Yes, thank you. This is the whole reason I came here, too. Yes, we currently have a vacancy. The, that vacancy does need to be a resident of, of the city limits, and so I believe we did have a few more applications, but this is the only application we received from an applicant that does live in the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And since this is a sole candidate, I assume we'd be able to put this on a consent agenda?
I think so, yes.
Any objection to that, counsel?
Thank you. That's it.
So he will be on the next consent agenda?
Is that tomorrow, or is that the next meeting? 31st, okay.
Again, thank you very much, and we'll move on to our first discussion item, item number 2A, Rock the Block Event: Main Street Closure. And for that, we have our Special Events Manager, Mr. John Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan?
Is this thing on? There it goes. Good morning, everyone. John Sullivan, City of Montrose, Special Events Manager for Public Works. Yep, we just wanted to discuss the, I believe this would be the third annual Rock the Block Main Street Closure, hosted by Habitat for Humanity on June 21. This closure would exceed 10 hours on Main Street, which is why we brought it to council approval. Setup time for the event on June 21 would be 6:30 in the morning. Cleanup time would be 5:00 PM, and we wanted to discuss that with everybody.
Counsel?
I've participated in the last two. They're fantastic events. It's one of those that I've gotten so much positive feedback from residents on the opportunities, on offerings, and the fun it is, and I'm looking forward to it again this year.
That's great.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir.
Easy peasy.
Yep. Wow. Railroad's letting right through. All right, item 2B, Parks Fertilizer and Herbicide Contract Award Recommendation. And for that, we have our Parks Superintendent, Mr. Dan Payne. Dan?
Good morning, everyone. How are you? So for this award recommendation, we're asking to extend the contract with Green and Barrett for the 2020, or excuse me, this is the herbicide one. Extend the contract with Aspen Save a Tree. This will be the first contract extension with them. This contract will be, they'll be fertilizing 149 acres of turf, and they'll also be doing the weed control and weed control on 18 vacant lots that we own throughout the city. This year is kind of exciting. They, they really wanted to step up their game as well. They'll be providing all the product this year, something I provided to them last year, and they want to do another treatment, and for a relatively small amount compared to last year.
Dan, is it the same product that you provided them last year?
It'll be a different product. We had a organic product that we tried for three years. We were supposed to start seeing improvements, and we didn't. The turf, especially Sunset Mesa, is in, needs some nitrogen extremely bad up there, so we'll be using that same product throughout all the park system and get some more nitrogen in there and get the, the grass growing a little bit faster.
Growing in adobe is difficult.
Yes, it is.
And the herbicide, is herbicide the same product as we use in the past?
Yep, yep. So it'll be, most of our broadleaf will be Speed Zone, is what they call it. It smells like pears. It's really pleasant. And then the, the stuff that we use in the areas where we kill everything, it'll be Open Site is what they use. It's a little bit closer to that more organic-friendly, but not quite organic, but yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Payne?
Yes, please. So what's the difference in cost if last year we supplied the product?
Last, last year, we spent $80,000. This year, we're looking at $130,000. So with, most of that's going straight to the purchase for fertilizer, which we always budgeted for, just came out of a different part of my budget. So this will be all combined together.
Combined, if you did two budget blocks.
Combined altogether, last year was $160,000. And so this year, yep, $30,000 cheaper.
Saving $30,000. And we're, are we doing the, I noticed we were talking about three applications. Is that just for weed abatement, or is that also for?
For weeds.
Okay. So it's not, we're not doing the fertilizer, just we're doing the regular?
Yep. Fertilizer will do two applications, one in the spring, one in the fall, and then weed will do three times.
Excellent.
Yep.
So does your staff do the application?
My staff?
Or?
No, it's, there's a contracting it out to save a tree. And they're all licensed through the Colorado Department of Agriculture, so they're following all state local guidelines.
Licensing is really important on them.
Yes.
Other questions? Dan, don't go away, because you're next. Again, Parks Turf Maintenance Contract Award Recommendation.
Okay, yeah, this one is the extension we're asking for with Green and Barrett for the 2025 season. As always, we contract out about 75% of our turf care through all our park system. This doesn't include Sunset Mesa or the cemetery. We like to keep those ones in-house, just because of all the different events and different organizations, we have to try to schedule maintenance around. The type of services they're gonna be doing is the same as mowing, trimming, edging. They clean up trash, they're doing irrigation checks. They also help us a lot in the fall with leaf pickup. They pick up leaves out of six parks every year for us, which is huge. And then they'll do small irrigation repairs for us, too. Replacing a few sprinkler heads when they come across them. This one here is, yeah, it's not to exceed $140,000, which is just a small increase from last year. The thing about Green and Barrett, it's all the parks that they take care of, I receive numerous compliments on them, so we're excited to extend this contract with them.
Any further questions or comments, counsel?
I'm being nosy today. So just general, on the, the leaf disposal, we already have the program in place where we basically recycle the leaves and turn them into mulch. Do they participate in that process as well, or do they have a separate disposal program?
They, they add to my pile.
Okay, so we're just kind of...
So I, I make my own compost for the cemetery every year, and so all the leaves that we gather in the parks, I make it into a compost for topsoil, for topping graves and filling in low spots at the cemetery.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions or comments? Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Item 2D, 2025 Street Light Replacement Project Authorization, and for that, we have our Streets Superintendent, Mr. Nick Pready.
Good morning, everyone. As you said, this is a recommendation for the expenditure of $180,000 to replace LED fixtures and poles. This is in partnership with DMEA. So to clarify some questions behind that, is that the, the actual infrastructure itself is owned and maintained by DMEA? So as lights go out, they do replace them with LED fixtures, but we are actively paying them to replace more than, you know, more than what is needing replacement at this time, like as far as ones that have gone out. This is the third year that we will continue this project. One addition that we're adding to this is going to be the pole replacement part, portion of that. So as you guys have noticed, there's a couple unsightly light poles around that were painted Montrose red. They do require an annual painting. We've recently been having DMEA swap those out with a light gray fiberglass pole, which is a direct berry replacement. As part of like the, the West Main project that we're doing right now, all of those lights will be going in as this, the same exact style of pole, so it's a direct berry, light fiberglass pole. One of the reasons we wanted to switch those is kind of, it's going to eliminate the need to have those repainted each and every year. We'll, we'll maintain having like traffic, traffic arms and signals being the Montrose red, so it'll help those pop a little bit more. But for the third year of the LED replacement, we'll kind of be in the, the more residential style areas, so I'd say Cobble Creek and Bridges Drive, you'll see those smaller decorative fixtures. They'll kind of be transitioning to replacing those with the, with an LED driver. Last, the last two years have been real successful. We've seen the replacement over 600 for lights. In total, we have around 1,900, so we still got some, a lot, a lot to go, but we are getting there. The last, the last report that we've gotten from DMEA is we're seeing around a 66% energy savings on those, so they are a great return on investment. And yeah, we, we're looking forward to continuing that project. I think next year will, will be our final year, and then we'll kind of move into the, the final ones that had already been replaced with LED, but they might not be the right color or temperature or wattage, basically. So that, that fourth and final year will kind of be the wrap-up of all those.
Correct me if, if I'm wrong on this number, but you were talking about return on investment, and I believe this statistic is a year and a half to recoup our costs.
Yep, and we're, we're seeing pretty dang close to that, which is great. Unfortunately, last year, we, they, they waited till the very end of the year to, to do their scope of work, you know, they, they also have a number of things that they have to do for their, their public utility, so we didn't get to see until like August or so, but looking at the graphs, it was pretty, pretty awesome to see, you know, the, the month, actually down to the week that they started the replacements, to see that energy drop off our, in our billing. So it's, it's a, it's a neat project. Glad to see that it's coming together.
Right, that, that, that's a huge savings to the citizens of Montrose. Great, thank you very much. Questions, comments?
Nick, how does this fall in line with the Downlighting and the Dark Sky initiatives?
So when we first started this project, we wanted to, we sat down with DMEA, and we came up with basically four different styles of lights. So between our interior lighting, collector, all the way down to residential, and each one of those, we wanted to specify that the bulb they used was a dark sky compliant light, on top of being LED. So all these are sourced by DMEA, but all that research was done at the beginning, so we're making sure that all those lights meet those needs.
I just learned a new word. Thank you. Dark side.
Dark sky, sorry.
Oh, I thought you said dark side, and I was looking at the light bulbs, thinking, oh, okay.
That's a whole nother term.
There are in the Montrose dark sides.
Yeah.
It's a bright side.
Only a bright side, uh.
Further questions or comments from counsel? Thank you, Nick. Well, that concludes our discussion items to Forte. We're at a general city council discussion. Any council member have anything they'd like to bring forward?
Definitely me. Hi there. I brought you the economic impact study for the Montrose Regional Airport, because this definitely impacts us. So if you'd like to take one of those, it's great to know the impact it has on our sales tax and our economy. There was quite an article in the newspaper, but I thought this was far more impactful to see those numbers across the bottom. That, yeah, oops. The impact is actually $713 million.
It's huge.
And it's, it's huge. See, 4,323 jobs. Their payroll is $231,000. Okay, so I, I just felt really good about that, that I think that just came out in the last two weeks.
And we really appreciate Judy Ann, your serving on the, on that, that board. I think the organization has done a great job, and it's great that we have a representative from the city on that.
It also, to me, gives credence as to why we keep our contribution for Colorado Flights Alliance. You know, we can support the airport advisory, whatever, but we can also support CFA, and that's pretty important for our economy.
Judy, are there any flights going in and out of Telluride right now? Commercial?
Out of Telluride? Yes, they have a daily flight on United. Well, United's the parent company. I don't know what the actual flight is. And they're starting ones into Phoenix. And then the Nukla Airport is just getting more and more busy, which a lot of those people in Telluride would rather fly into Nukla and then go up, okay? And that, a lot of backcountry flyers. In fact, I believe it's next summer, there's going to be a backcountry camping event, where these people fly in in their private backcountry planes, and then they park on Airport Runway, put up their tents, and they stay there for four or five days. It's a big deal, okay?
But I think we also need to remember that regardless of flights in to Telluride, Montrose will always be the destination airport for Telluride.
And Crested Butte.
And Crested Butte. So that's why it's very important that we continue to enhance the airport here. And I don't know, for those of you who haven't been out there since the remodeling was completed, an addition was completed, it's really, it's something to be very proud of. And we're fortunate that the county is doing what they're doing to, to support and maintain that facility. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we will have jetways for all of the gates by?
Yes, we're still waiting for the other ones to get here. Those have to be special-made, and we order them from somewhere in Utah. I wanted to say Logan, but that may not be right, because when you have a jetway, it can only be serviced by the company who made it. And so you don't want to get a jetway that's maybe made in Bangladesh, because if you have a repair problem, okay. So having these done in Utah are really good. It's just, it's, there've been some, a few glitches, but it'll happen eventually. I'm going to start building more hangars at the airport. High demand for hangars. And of course, that's good revenue for the airport to have a hangar that, you know...
Yeah, just as clarification, we don't run the airport. It's still a county venture, so even though it's a good money maker, we're not making money from that. But it benefits the airport itself, which in turn benefits Montrose.
Yep, the airport is totally an enterprise fund. I'm sorry. Yeah, the airport. I said that right. No, no county money as such.
But sales tax revenues that are generated for the city are?
The amount of tourism that brings into Montrose is a very big economic driver for seeing Montrose.
And it's amazing the number of people who have come through the Montrose Airport over the years on their way to perhaps Telluride, and they find out what a real city Montrose is and what a great place it is, and they end up relocating to Montrose. I don't know that, you know, everything I have is anecdotal as far as what kind of returns we see on that, but it's, it's for real. We do get a lot of benefit monetarily and in, also indirectly, so it's totally important. I think that we continue to do what we can do to support and enhance that, that facility.
And one of the things, too, is this airport has two runways, so there are many times that some of the other airports in western Colorado have been closed down, and Montrose ends up being that alternate location for them to fly to, because we do have the extra runway.
A lot of pilots fly in to Telluride thinking that's going to be really great, until they hit in the air and they look down on that little tiny runway that falls off there to the cliff, and they say, oh, we're diverting to Montrose.
They don't have any aircraft, any experience landing on an aircraft carrier.
That's, you're very right.
That's the only place I know that they give you eye covers for takeoff and landing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I get to move on?
Yes.
I have one more thing. I've been doing a lot of thinking lately about the way our meetings are organized and the things that are done for us, and I so appreciate when we come to city council meetings, and we have an agenda that's written out with the title on the agenda item being totally complete as to what it's going to be. So when the mayor introduces something, they can say, we're talking about so-and-so, and these are the resolution numbers, whatever, the whole thing. And then our agenda also says, when you make a motion, this is the wording for the emotion, for the motion, that keeps it absolutely legal and protocol and in line. And I think in some ways, we just have taken that, I have taken it for granted for 13 years, that that's just the way it is, and I'm finding that's not always the way it is. And so I want to publicly thank Lisa. You do a fantastic job with that.
Thank you. But I do have to say, the Lex Scotts, that they're wording on the agenda, so it's not always...
But you put, you put the title, you put the legal parts, you do that. And then when we go into executive session, you do a great job, Chris, of having all that documentation, so the, the legal part of that is taken care of. Okay? Because I wouldn't know what to go in and say. I wouldn't know how to lead it up and what to do, and it's so nice to have those steps to follow and keep us.
Yeah, it is, and I, again, I echo what you're saying, and the part I really like about my agenda, it says, mayor talk, mayor shut up, you know? So I know when to start and when to stop.
Only, only this copy.
But so, thank you both.
Yes, thank you. And I know that comes from, from all of us. Thank you. And we always know when it's your Scott.
Yeah. Well, I just got one quick update. So I'm, we all serve on boards that benefit our community, and one, one of the boards I serve on is the Region 10 Board. And right now, the legislator, legislature is going through the long bill, and they're taking a axe to a lot of funding. And one of the areas that Region 10 deals with is the Area Agency on Aging, and they're the ones that provide meals and rides and in-home care for our seniors, that allow our seniors to stay in their homes. And if you have an opportunity to contact your legislator and advocate for keeping that funding whole, last year, there was about an $80,000 shortfall, and a lot of the communities, the City of Montrose being one of them, stepped up, and we gave a little bit of extra to help, and it was so appreciated. But this year, we want to make sure that the legislature knows that this is critical funding. Our families, your grandma, your mom, are critical, and your grandpa staying in his own house is critical. So please advocate for the, with your legislators to keep our Agency on Aging funding as complete as you can. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dave, do we have the support of our local legislators, both in the House and the Senate?
Hard to say. Comes and goes. But this is not, not top of mind for a lot of them, so making it top of mind for them is beneficial.
Okay. Okay, other comments or discussion items for counsel? If not, one thing I, I would add myself, along with two of our council members, Councilwoman Judy Ann Files and Councilman, what's your name, Douglas, spelled right?
You don't have your name tag on. We don't know who you are.
Yeah, we don't know who you are. We were at the ribbon cutting and grand opening for Community for Goodwill on Saturday morning for their new store here, and I, you know, I thought maybe there'd be 10 or 15 people there. We almost got run over at the front door with all of the people in their blue baskets wanting to get in, but it was great. It was fun. There were probably a couple hundred people there anyway for the, for the, for the ribbon cutting and, and grand opening, and we had a lot of representatives from Goodwill, Colorado there, including the Chief Executive Officer. She was pretty amazed with Montrose and the reception, and this is only the third store for Goodwill on the Western Slope, so I think that's a real testament to, to Montrose. And as I reminded people, and, excuse me, in my remarks to, to the crowd, that they're, they're buying nice merchandise, but they're also contributing to their fellow citizens in Colorado through the Goodwill process. And one thing I was not aware of is that about 86% of the revenues generated by Goodwill go to programs and services, and a very small amount to administration, which is not always the case in a lot of nonprofits. So we welcome them to the community, and I think it's going to be a great place, and I thank my fellow council members for, for being there with me.
I spoke with people who went out in the afternoon to go out there, and they had to hunt for a parking spot, still.
Yeah, people started lining up at 8:00 in the morning to go in the door at 9:00, and they stood out there, and I was, I was surprised. I didn't expect that to happen. And yet, once this 200 people group got inside, that building's large enough and it's so well-arranged inside, it was not really crowded. And I thought the merchandise was great, and they had a lot of it, and it was very impressive. I even went around to make a donation. They have a drive-through lane on the south end of that building. Actually, it's where the MEDC office used to be, and you just drive through, and there were about 10 young volunteers that came running out to help me, and I had three things. But it was really impressive. I think they'll be a great addition to our community.
Anything further from counsel? Staff reports, Mr. Bell?
I can tell.
I can see Mr. Murphy is just ready.
Mr. Murphy came up, ready to go. Bill, do you want to go?
Sure, go ahead.
So yeah, some traffic updates. We're getting a lot of calls about it. So Ogden is scheduled to open the end of this week. So they, the pavers weren't free, so it'll be opened as gravel, which was the original plan. And when they do pave it, they'll use flash, so they won't have to close it again. So Ogden is open for good. They'll be working on some sidewalk work the following week on the side, but for now, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. That's an anticipation of future expansion, so nobody's out of a sidewalk or anything at this point, so. Very exciting, great project. And then we'll leave everything open through the weekend, and then the following Monday, we will be closing Woodgate and Old Grove for the roundabout, so. The timing actually worked out really well. They just ran out of work to do on the north side, so they're at a point where they're ready to move into the intersection. They'll start with some sewer work, kind of down towards Townsend. Local access to the Walgreens and the bank will be maintained. As soon as that's done, they'll pull it back, and it'll be just the intersection only. And as a reminder, that work is scheduled to go through September, although because there's not a lot of utility work, things will go a little quicker than our typical roundabout, because there's no major relocation or anything. So it's all new.
Great.
Yeah, a couple of small ones, but yeah.
Is that just the intersection, or are they going to be working north of the intersection also?
The project will finish both. So obviously, the priority is in the intersection, because we want to get that open as quickly as possible, so likely final paving, it may all come together, together, or all at once, just kind of naturally, but their priority will go into the intersection to get it open as quickly as possible, and they'll do some cleanup work on the north end, mostly, into late summer.
By the way, I got several very positive comments about yours and Jim's presentation at the forum.
Oh, awesome.
So thank you for doing such a great job.
Those are fun. Yeah, it was a good crowd. It was great.
Yeah.
And then, and do you want to talk about the tour? Do you want to dive into it? After this, today, we had, do have the tour still scheduled for the new Public Works facility. I think following this, correct? I think following this, correct? Jim has a bus. If you want to ride with Jim?
Is he driving?
Yeah, that's the, that's the straight off. But you're also welcome to go there directly. We have plenty of parking on site. So I'll be there to help people park if you just want to leave right from there after that's completed.
I apologize. I will not be.
Okay. But yeah, no new information, mostly just kind of showing you on the ground what we've been talking about over the last year or so. Just a, yeah, unique opportunity to do, it's not very often we're moving that much there to doing that work at this scale. So it's a great opportunity to get a feel for what's going on there and what's coming up. And we'll show you around. We'll start in the job trailer, just kind of run through the site on the plans and then we'll go for a quick little walkabout.
Any other? Any other staff input?
We do have official dates for the 2025 Spring Cleanup, which will be April 25 and 26. It's Friday and Saturday. We are partnering with Habitat for Humanity again. So for those of the citizens that can't make it down to the Spring Cleanup event, they can go to our website, City of Montrose Spring Cleanup. They'll find details with a phone number to Habitat that can help them schedule like a pickup and at-home pickup and help them bring their materials either down to the Spring Cleanup Yard or to Habitat themselves, so.
Great, great. Chief, I know you're hiding out back there in the back. Do you have anything? Okay, well, if there's no further, no further staff comments, I think we will stand adjourned. Thank you.